Madam Clerk, could you please read the robe?
Mr. Bowzen?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Voits?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
And Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you all. Welcome to this council meeting this evening. During our moment of silence, we are doing a nationwide remembrance of those that have lost their lives to COVID and that have been impacted by COVID as well. Our amphitheater, which the lights are always on, is in amber color right now, so during our moment of silence, if we can remember the families and people that are impacted. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by at-large council member Dave Bowzen.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Jewen.
Move to approve the agenda with one amendment, and that amendment, hold on, I'm getting it, is for item number six, to approve the exist- I'm sorry, strike the existing language and replace it with this language. Resolution setting date of public hearing as February 1st, 2021. Approve a recurring master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Leasing of Waterloo, Iowa to lease 23 vehicles for police administrative and investigative staff and instruct the city clerk to publish said notice. So with that amendment to the agenda and the approval of the minutes of January 4th, 2021, the regular session, I move approval.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Council questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. The first item, I know it's a day late, but I thought it was important enough to read the City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation for January 18th, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. changed our nation forever through his leadership service and clarity of vision. On the Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday, we honor the lasting legacy of this great American, remember the ideals for which he fought, and recommit ourselves to ensuring that our country's promise extends to all Americans across this great land. And whereas Dr. King devoted his life to strengthening the content of the American character and called our nation to live up to its founding principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all its citizens. And whereas Dr. King's faith gave him the courage to confront discrimination and segregation, and he preached that all powers of evil are ultimately no match for even one individual armed with eternal truths. Through his determination, spirit, and resolve, Dr. King helped lift souls and led one of the greatest movements in history for equality and freedom. And whereas our nation has made progress toward realizing Dr. King's dream, yet the work to achieve liberty and justice for all is never ending. We must continue to protect the rights won through the sacrifice of Dr. King and other civil rights leaders. Our nation must never rest until equality is real, opportunity is universal, and all citizens are empowered to realize their dreams. And whereas, as we observe Dr. King's birthday, I encourage all to celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Let us live off Dr. King's teaching as we continue to work for the day when dignity and humanity of every person is respected. Now therefore, I, Quin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby call upon the citizens of Waterloo to join in the national observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday on Monday, January 18th, 2021. So, a very fitting tribute for the proclamation. And just really quickly, this weekend on Sunday, some of these you can still go back and take a look at them. There was a virtual NAACP Social Action Eat kind of banquet, but it was all virtual. And then yesterday, we did our second MLK breakfast where we had some speakers from the community. And then tonight at 6:30, there is a health and well-being workshop. And then Wednesday and Thursday, we also have other workshops for people to be involved and be engaged and hear the panel. So, that's all I have. Counsel, I mean, is there anyone in the audience? Or Kelly, do we have any speakers signed up?
No speaker signed up for oral presentations, but we do have a registered speaker for item 13.
Yeah. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, I have, I have a few things I wanted to discuss or bring up. First is a statement that I just want to make, and it is as follows. If a person's word to another, is a person's word to another person good or is it only a statement made in the moment that can be changed, disregarded, or dismissed? For months now, two individuals who are property owners have been told that abutting properties owned by the city would be theirs. There have been several conversations in each case. In both documents, in both of these documents have been shared with understandings reached. Both families have been led to believe that the request not only would be, but are going to be reality, but it might take time to go through the process. Now, that was quite a while ago. Months have gone by, and nothing more, but continued statements that it's not done yet. And then the unbelievable phrase of, well, there might be other plans for that property. Each of these families contacted me as they both reside in Ward 3. They gave me the history of each and ended with the question, what's going on, really? On each occasion, I asked for a meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, who in turn graciously had meetings set up with, with staff and the families. In the first instance, the meeting was around August 19th of 2020, with the result being that a decision would be reached and Mr. Willie Outlaw and his family would obtain the property next to him, which he had cared for for four to five years, mowing it, weeding it, shoveling it. Well, August 24th, the following Monday, came and went. Five months has now passed since that meeting, and still nothing. Mr. Outlaw has met the requirements for our sale of property and mode of own aspects for his request. In the second case, drawings were even made up, and the individual, Mr. Gary Stevens, and his family were led to believe that a holdup on moving forward was a question with Mid-American Energy Easement. Mr. Stevens was hearing nothing. Mr. Stevens contacted me and a meeting with the mayor was set up with you, Mr. Mayor, again graciously, with the Stevens family, myself, in planning. That meeting was September 10th. Mr. Stevens was assured at that meeting that the property he requested for development to put a pole building on was his and would be drawn up shortly. Again, this is city property, a buddy Mr. Stevens residential property. Now, I see that Mr. Stevens' agreement with the city may be contingent on the city buying other land next to this, that Mr. Stevens had been promised. Mr. Stevens' request does not interfere with any city planning proposal for that other land. And what's going on there? It seems that both of these agreements have seemingly been dismissed, overlooked, or abrogated. Is this the image our city wants to project and portray? I hope not. Let's live up to our agreements and let's keep our word. Thank you. Now, the second thing I just wanted to mention was that last night, 804 West Fore Street was opened as the Waterloo Warming Center. And its opening will be, it will stay open until the end of March. If people want to donate to that, because they definitely could use some donations, you can send a check or money order to the Hospitality House at 1003 Mulberry, Waterloo, 50703, or online donations can be submitted by visiting the Facebook page of Waterloo Warming Center, and you can donate through PayPal. A third thing is that I had a person call me wondering if leisure services might renew the whole concept of pushing snow off of places like the Lagoon or other places for young ice skaters to go out rather than having them push that snow off so they can skate on those. And then the final thing, Mr. Mayor, is when will the renewal of the mask mandate be on our agenda? Thank you.
Fourth one, I think Kelly responded to you and answered that question, if I'm not mistaken.
I didn't get the one it would be on the agenda.
Mr. Morrissey, I had responded to your email that the mask mandate had already been drafted, so it will be on the February 1st agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Mr. Morris, you bring up a good point in that first one. So, no. Where are we at with those two properties?
Joel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, we need to get development agreements formalized with the prospective buyers. Obviously, the state code has regulations as to how the city disposes of property, so we've been working on information. With Mr. Outlaw, at one point, there's, there's actually two abutting parcels next to his, so I think we had two options out there for acquiring the first one right away and the second one later, or doing them all at once, as we look at that area for redevelopment and for Mr. Outlaw's expansion needs. So, I will contact Mr. Outlaw tomorrow to update him. Mr. Stevens, this is obviously a uniquely laid-out parcel where the city has a large parcel of land next to Mr. Stevens' house, and he needs a portion of that for his garage in order not to landlock ourselves with our remaining parcel and look at the bigger picture for how the city should develop land and do infill housing for new housing opportunities on the north side, new infill property tax gaining, as well as other sanitary sewer services, improvement of the road. We have been waiting to kind of look at the bigger picture to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can for the citizens of Waterloo in the layout and the disposal of this land, including a portion of that to Mr. Stevens.
So, can that property be in these folks' hands by mid-March? That's what we want to know, because it has been a long time. We need to-
I would, I would hope by the end of March, we can get through the entire process.
For both of them.
February, March to get that done. Yes, sir.
For both of them.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. All right, Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein?
Once again, I would like to urge us to go back to the chambers for our meetings. I think it causes an undue hardship on some of the people in the city who want to participate. We just had a little example of that prior to this meeting starting. And I, I think we can safely distance. I think we can wear masks. I think, just as it was before, those who have underlying conditions can Zoom, and those who don't and want to come to greet the people, you know, in person, I just think it's important. And the Congress has gone back to work like that, and many state legislators are, and I just would like to see us do it, too.
The state has already had a case of COVID already with their lax, lax rules, but we'll keep reviewing it, and thank you for the urging, Mrs. Klein. Anyone else?
Motion to close the public hearing. Receive comments and place on file.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Counsel.
Motion to approve consent agenda with the additions to 1A1 as follows. For the January 11th bill's payment in the amount of $1,302,191.67 and the January 19th, 2021 bill's payment in the amount of $4,396,920.98. Move to receive, approve, and place on file.
Second.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Voits?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen?
Mrs. Jewen? Thumbs up?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Just really quickly, just want to acknowledge Ed Addison, Design Review Board, so we definitely thank him for re-upping to serve as well. So, thank you so much, Counsel, for approving all of those items. Public hearings, number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 Center for the Arts Parking Improvement Phase 3 Northwest Half Project, contract number 1004.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
No comments on file.
Anyone in Cyberland want to comment? Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? I think this is one we've probably been waiting on for a long time. Mr. Morrissey? Well, a motion has been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
No, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Voits?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our estimate was $580,700. Our first bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $554,672.70. Second bidder is Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $609,882.80. Third bidder is Kay Cunningham Construction Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $634,566.75. Our fourth and final bidder is Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $558,399.80.
What was that last one, 500 and? And where are they out of again?
They're Lodge Construction out of Clarksville, Iowa.
Okay, all right, thank you. Could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for fiscal year 2021 Highway 63 enhancements from Washington Street to Parker Street Project, contract number 1029.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone out there or any comments on file?
No comments on file.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, adopting a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion, okay, motion's been made with the second. Counsel, conversation or concerns, questions? Eagerness?
Eagerness.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Voits?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And Kelly, I'll just read this next one, don't I? The project was led by-
Yep, that's correct.
For the record, this project was led by the Iowa Department of Transportation on December 15th. Mr. Amos?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $1,588,506.81 and approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with fiscal year 2021 Highway 63 enhancements from Washington Street to Parker Street Project, contract number 1029, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said contract.
Second.
All right, that was made with the second. Counsel, any further comments? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Voits?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Jewen, could you take four, five, and six?
Certainly. Move approval of resolution approving the payment of invoices as needed, generally weekly, by the Finance Department with subsequent approval by the City Council. Number five is resolution approving award of hotel motel tax, council discretionary funds to the Waterloo Municipal Concert Band in the amount of $13,619 for the 2020 summer season, Leisure Services Event Shuttle in the amount of $4,485 and Waterloo Se- Leisure Services and Sportsplex in the amount of $6,250. And number six, resolution approving a recurring master equity lease-
I was just setting the date of hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hold on.
That's why I kind of asked you to do that one, because you may be-
I know, I know, I know, I screwed up. I'm sorry. Okay, number six is resolution setting date of public hearing as February 1st, 2021 to approve a recurring master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Leasing of Waterloo, Iowa to lease 23 vehicles for police administrative and investigative staff and instruct the city clerk to publish said notice. There.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. First, are there any, anyone on the telephones or Zoom that has questions? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, was that supposed to be 2021 on number five?
No.
Uh-
Or last year, is that? Okay.
That's supposed to be 2021.
This is Michelle Weedner, CFO. It is for the 2020 summer season for the band. These are, these are items that we kind of held to see what kind of hotel motel taxes we would receive. While our hotel motel taxes did plummet, we did receive enough, I think, to honor these commitments, so I'm proposing that they be paid.
Great.
Counsel, questions?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor?
Mr. Bowzen?
I, I, yeah, I have a few questions. On number four, on the approving, paying the bills weekly when we meet and approve them every other week, I, I wouldn't have an issue with paying contractual bills that recur every week. An example would be part of our security at the, at the waste treatment plant, or anything that we have contractual obligations to. What I, what I mean by that is, is if, if we've, if we've entered into a contract with some, with someone and we've approved that contract, I don't have a problem paying that bill. But I do, I do have an issue that we're, that we're prepaying bills, also seeing all of them. If it's, if it's a, a weekly bill that, that comes out every week, every month, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem if it's something that we signed a contract on and, and it's a contractual obligation that we pay, but I just have some issues that were, that were prepaying bills prior to also seeing them and approving them. And the discretionary funds, I, I, I thought that was a typo, too. I didn't, I said we were paying for concerts that happened last summer, and I'm curious if, if they had a concert at every one of those concert dates that they had listed.
Yeah, that's a reduced price, isn't it, from what we normally pay, Michelle?
They asked for 20, they, they did reduce the amount, they did. I will have to look and see how many concerts they had, but they did, they did play. So, we aren't paying them for a time with that they didn't. So, they have not been paid for the concerts they did present.
So, that is down from what we normally allocate.
Yes.
Michelle, you want to respond to Mr. Bowzen on number four?
Yes, the reason that I'm asking for this, it's going to kind of get in the weeds a little bit, but we have probably at least 40 people citywide who are involved in bill payments. And I think it, it will be very difficult. The, the way this works is they put their bills in a batch, which are forwarded to us in the Finance Department, who then has to do our review and process them. And I think it will just be extremely difficult to get all the people involved in the process in all the different departments, because they submit them, and they, they would have to do different batches for different dates, and we, my past experience here is that we don't have very good luck with that. We used to try to pay certain bills on a cycle, so we would only pay that vendor, say, once a month, and at that time, it was manual, so it was easy for the Finance Department to take the invoice and put it in the right week. Now that the departments enter them, it is not necessarily easy to move them. It would take a lot of extra work by the Finance Department. As I believe you all discussed when you were setting your new council procedures, a lot of cities in the state of Iowa don't have any bills approved by council before they're paid. So, this seemed like the best way to keep our processes working. We have to be able to review bills every week. I, I don't think that we can do it every two weeks and keep the bills paid and keep everything going without adding staff that would be here one week, and then I, you know, we'd have to find something else for them to do the next week. It just would not be a very efficient process if we try to bunch them up that way.
Michelle, weren't, weren't each department tasked with, when we, when we decided to go to two weeks to come up with a plan on how they were going to operate all of this on a two-week basis?
Um, yes, and that was my plan, that we would continue to pay the bills weekly, because that is the most efficient process, not only for my department, but for all the bookkeepers and billprovers citywide. And like I said, that does involve probably forty people across the city have a role in that for their department.
So then, if, if departments were, were planning on submitting things on a, on a, on a twice-a-month schedule for you now, they, they need to be notified or, or to go back to a weekly billing?
Well, I don't think we ever notified anybody that we were gonna switch the bill payment to, that I'm aware of. I certainly didn't.
All right, well, I was just hoping that, that, that this would have been worked out, at least. All right, I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask Michelle a question. If you pay a bill, and then when it comes time for the council to approve it, we don't. If we have a question or an objection to it, what would happen?
You really are not, no longer approving the payment of the bill. You're kind of placing them on file. Because if the check's already been sent, you're correct, there's nothing we can do about that. But however, we, you know, anything that is paid by contract, council's already approved. There are, you know, and then we have the pre auth system, so most things, I hate to say most, because there are certain things that are exempted, paying utilities, paying small invoices, things like that, um, have, don't require a preapproval process, you know, today. So and we, we've never actually had a big problem with that. If there are invoices that I or my department considers questionable, we, we would likely defer those and not pay them until council has a chance to approve them. So I.
Thank you.
So like, Michelle, on, on these, um, like, I'm just looking at the council agenda, you know, seven, eight, nine, and the rest of them, almost. Uh, a conversation has somewhat have already been started on a lot of these.
Yep.
So, Mr. Bozen, um, would you like to, um, have a conversation with Michelle and I, um, in the near future so that uh, we can hear concerns and make sure that we have safeguards in that we need to?
But, but we're working on it tonight to, to push this through to weekly. So, I, I mean, I'm more than willing to, to have, have, uh, sit down and have some conversations. I, I had no problem with contractual or, or, uh, or recur. I just had, had an issue with, with bills that are coming through, because I, I, um, Michelle can contest, I, I send about, I send quite a few emails questioning bill payments at times, so, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is. But I'm more than willing to sit down and try to work on some of these other issues.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take seven, eight, and nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein?
Number seven is a resolution approving supplemental agreement, number one, to the professional services agreement, AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed, executed July eighth of twenty twenty in an amount not to exceed three hundred sixty thousand dollars in conjunction with a phase one preliminary engineering report for a new interceptor sewer serving the Highway sixty-three South Corridor. Contract number ten thirty-seven, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number eight is a resolution approving supplemental agreement, number thirteen, to a professional services agreement originally executed April third of two thousand six with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in an amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in conjunction with the U.S. Highway sixty-three improvements from Jefferson Street to Donald Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And finally, number nine is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Clap Saddle Garber Associates, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed one hundred eight thousand dollars for construction-related services in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Levercy Road Lift Station Project, contract number nine eight three, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
Thank you, sir. I just had a, a quick question on number, uh, seven for Jamie. Uh, or I, I, I guess, I guess it might be for Randy, if Brian's not on, I'm just looking here. Uh, the three hundred sixty thousand dollars for not to exceed, does that also include the seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars in, into that three sixty that we approved in July for the preliminary design?
I know that does not.
What we're saying is, we're, we're looking at almost five hundred thousand dollars or four hundred and fifty thousand for this? For just the design work and AECOM's work?
For the, the phase one portion of it. Yep, that is correct. And then, uh, um, Ross, if you're on, if you want to explain a little bit more as far as what all that entails, um, that would be great.
All right. Ross Hilsman, AECOM, um, okay, so the, uh, that's design of the sanitary sewer improvements along Highway sixty-three from, um, uh, Home Park Boulevard to Jane Street, so phase one, and, uh, uh, it's upsizing, uh, the sewer main significantly from what it is currently will, will help mitigate a lot of the problems of, uh, uh, backflows and so forth, such as the Muncie upland area. And then this, uh, this design also includes the, um, an overflow for, uh, or a relief sewer from the Home Park Boulevard neighborhood, which will tie into Highway sixty-three to relieve that, the issues that, that occurred back in, um, in June of this year. And, uh, the overall project construction-wise for those two pieces as part of this design is, is approximately five point two million dollars, five point three million, uh, for a total project cost. And that's what the project entails.
All right, and I, and I know, um, I think Mrs. Klein and I and uh, other folks had toured around this area, uh, and know that there was a lot of interest in trying to figure out how we can help support the residents in that area. So, good questions, uh, Councilman Bozen, and a project that we're looking very forward to see, uh, moving forward. Um, counsel, seven, eight, and nine? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen? Mrs. Jewen, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
A happy yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, ten, eleven, and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't know. I, I heard that. I make a motion adopt a resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement, non-residential, and proving deeds to sell and donate real property to the city of for the partial acquisition of property store sewer easements, drain easements, and temporary from the Ascension Lutheran Church in the amount of eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars and forty-eight cents, located at two two, twenty-two eleven Maynard Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Eleven is a resolution approving a contract termination agreement with the state of Iowa and Crystal Distribution Services Incorporated contract eighteen dash TC dash zero one zero for a project that did not commence forward with any state of Iowa incentives, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number twelve is a resolution approving a development agreement with Midwest Development Corp. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the construction of ten single-family homes and seven duplexes located northeast of thirty-four oh five Monticello Avenue with a minimum value of one hundred fifty thousand dollars each, approving a development agreement of five thousand dollars per unit, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. Um, counsel, anyone, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
I'm sorry to keep bothering you. Uh.
No, you're not bothering me. No, never.
I had a real question, uh, and maybe Noel can, or Jamie can help me out here, right, on number ten. I, I, I truly feel that, that this project needs to go forward. We, we need to, uh, correct the water problems out there in the end of, of Upton and, and, and Hughes and Christensen and those, and the, and, and those, uh, uh, roads there, and, but, but that, that land is, is like a barren land that, that turns into a swamp when it rains, and my, my, my concern is the purchase price and the easement price of eighty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars for one point four acres of land, when in fact, we're buying one point three acres of land further down into this meeting for thirty-three thousand dollars. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned on the purchase price. Uh, and, and I'm also concerned with the fact this is development agreement allows them to have a curb cut on Green Hill. And that curb cut bothers me to death, because, uh, putting a curb cut on a forty-five mile an hour road in itself has inherent problems. So if I could just get a quick overview, then I might have another question.
Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, I can address your second concern first, this Jamie Knutson, city engineer. As far as the curb cut on Green Hill, we have talked with the, uh, traffic engineer, and the curb cut would come out at the intersection there at Green Hill and the ramps onto University. So that would basically, basically, they would be, we would end up having to put in a fourth, uh, traffic signal there, so it would be a signalized intersection. Um, we don't want to just, I agree with you, we do not want to let them have, uh, access just anywhere along there. So we tried to locate it where it was gonna make sense in the future. The other, the other part of that is the church is not actively planning to put anything in there, but they wanted the option to, in the future, be able to uh, maybe sell off some of that property for a commercial development, and they didn't want to limit themselves um, to not being able to get access for a commercial development off of Green Hill. Um, as far as the purchase price, and Noel can maybe answer that a little bit better, we had spent, we being planning and engineering have spent the better part of eight months negotiating with, uh, Ascension Lutheran Church, and I do want to say thank you to those folks. Um, COVID did not help anything. Um, it's been a long, long process to get us to this point. Um, yes, the property maybe seems a little bit high as far as the price, and, and I'll let Noel speak to that, but this was, this was the agreement that, uh, that everybody felt was in our best interests, um, both the church as well as the city anyway. So Noel, I don't know if you want to comment anymore?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, I mean, I, I think Jamie did a good job of explaining that. We, a- as a part of the, the acquisition price, what we look at, um, it's called a compensation value. Basically, we look at what the price per square foot is of other land in that immediate area, um, very comparable to kind of how they do appraisals. Um, they did have, uh, some prices that were higher based on the commercial aspect of it, since it does a butt commercial land, but also residential land, so um, we obviously pushed for the, the lower amount with the residential land for the portion that we're actually buying, um, is, is further back in where the more residential development would occur, uh, looking at proper land use. Um, I'd also remind that there is another, um, half an acre of land of about eighteen thousand, um, that's just an easements along there that will be going in there and tearing up during construction, then restoring as best we can. Um, so it's, it's really the, the two different amounts of, I think there's about five or six different easements, and then the acquisition part that, that comprise the total amount.
So, uh, just my last question would be, do we have an idea, if they decide, if, if they decide to utilize that curb cut, what the city's gonna be on the hook for, for re-signaling that intersection? Because that, that, that's, that's not gonna be done cheaply. I, you know, it's a, it's a T-intersection right now with, uh, you know, the, the traffic signals. I mean, I, I think we're gonna be on the hook for quite a bit of money, re-signaling that intersection.
I don't believe the, the development agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, the doesn't specify anybody's costs in there, it just provides the option for them to be able to get that curb cut, and then we would have to look at whatever is being proposed there for development. If it's, uh, a single business, that's one thing. If it's, uh, there is actually enough area in there to provide a road into, into their site and have a couple other businesses. So if it's something that that looks like is gonna happen, then yeah, we'll take a little closer look at it. But there's nothing in the agreement that that commits the city or them to one thing or another. It was just giving them the ability to have one off of there, if that's what, uh,
Well, but that, but.
Future.
Sure is that, as if, if they decide to utilize that curb cut, then, then we're obligated to change the signaling, the way the signals are set right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's anything in the development agreement that commits the city to, to installing another signal in there.
But there, there'd be no traffic lights that even face that to know when they could come out, or when, when they, when they would have, you know, a green or a red light, or, or, or whatever, so.
Correct.
If they open up a curb cut and they decide to utilize a curb cut for any reason, somebody's gonna be on the hook to re-signal that intersection.
And it, and it very well, right now, there's nothing in the agreements that say the city will do this, that, or the other thing, or the church will. That'll be something that will have to be looked at as part of it. Uh, I assume that if the church decides to sell that much property, and there's going to be several new businesses that goes in there, um, I'm, I'm assuming that we would, the city would look at that as any development agreement that we would do with, uh, any other business within the city that's looking to build. So again, there's nothing specifically in there that, that commits the city to installing, uh, installing a signal there, just the ability to give them a curb cut if that's what they would like there at that point.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, questions? Mrs. Klein?
Um, I just want to thank everybody, everybody that's been involved in this. It was three years ago that those neighbors called me, and I waded through some stormwater then, and I saw how they got slammed with the water racing down the hill behind, I think it's Adults Incorporated, and then the, the church slopes down there too, and they were just really getting hit hard, and this should alleviate that. And I'm very grateful, and I know that every one of those neighbors are grateful, and many of them are, are watching us tonight.
Well, definitely want to, uh, uh, thank our staff too. You know, some of these situations, uh, US council or mayor or whatever, uh, we encounter these situations, so it's our ability to try to do our best to make sure we correct, uh, some of these challenges, so thank you.
Our wonderful staff worked with that church, and, uh, the president of their council called me and said that our people were wonderful to work with, and, and I just think it just worked out so nicely, and I appreciate it. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take thirteen, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Here we go.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion adopt a, a resolution approving an acquisition contract with Todd L. Chapman and Scott C. Chapman for the acquisition of one point three acres of land generally, generally located at the south end of Fairfield Street in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars plus cost, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk, I believe we have someone to speak to this item.
Yep, we have, uh, Kent Cowell on the line.
Kent, state your name and address for the record, and the next five minutes is yours.
Hello, my name is Kent Cowell. Hello. Yeah, my name is Kent Cowell, and I live at two forty-one Fairfield Street. And I, uh, also on the behalf of, I think, Mr. Morrissey has a petition signed by a whole bunch of neighbors around the neighborhood opposing that uh, cul-de-sac putting down on the end of the street. And it's not that we're against uh, the city, you know, expanding, but we just feel that this is why we all moved onto this street, because it was a. this is why we all moved onto this street because it was a dead end and it's a quiet street. And that's why I paid a lot more money for it than I would have on any other street in this side of town. And I just want to tell you that, you know, I, and I'm, I'm sure that a hundred percent of the neighbors that live on this street oppose this. And it's not only because because of the, uh, cul-de-sac that they want to put up there, but it's also because for the, it's a wooded area. So it's going to be several months or years of heavy truck traffic driving up and down our little street. And that, and that's why we purchased this. All of us purchased the property and I can say this to a person. That, that's why we purchased this property, which, because it was a dead end street. And I'm not against it. But I mean, I, I'm thinking there's a lot of other areas in Waterloo that would be better to rebuild than a wooded area at the end of Fairfield Street. And like I used to live on Newell Street out across from Red Carpet Golf and there's approximately forty acres behind there of platted streets that, that, that they could, you know, the city could build or go out and build property and get tax revenue. But, and that's basically all I have to say. I just, we are opposed to this as a neighborhood. And it's, and it has nothing to do with, you know, housing or low income housing or anything like that. It's just like, we just love the street we live on. We want to keep it this way. So I want to thank you very much for your time and anyone that disagrees with me, I can understand that, you know, everyone has disagreements and, uh, but that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for your time as well. Uh, do we have anyone else online that would like to speak to this?
Um, I would, if that's okay.
Yeah. State your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Uh, Joshua Adams, uh, five twelve Cedar Bend Street. Um, so I live on the other side of the property from Fairfield. Um, the north end of my property is directly adjacent, butts up with the proposed, uh, one point three acres to the north. And then the city owns, uh, the property. Um, it's kind of mentioned in here as being rehabilitated. That's to my west. So, um, much like the, the gentleman, uh, who bravely spoke said that, you know, the reason I live here is, you know, we have a sense of, of woods. Uh, there's wildlife. Um, that, that's really what brought me to this neighborhood. Uh, with, with that being said, um, mu- much like the, the previous gentleman, um, the city owns a property next to me. That house has been abandoned and a nuisance for years. Um, I'm very grateful that they're starting to rehab it now. Um, but there's hundreds of properties that need rehab in, in Waterloo. And it seems, it, I can't wrap my head around why we would uh, essentially destroy or buy woods so we could tear it down and put five houses in a one point three acre area when, uh, there, there's countless places throughout the town where we can take that funds uh, to rehab houses and, uh, to make those neighborhoods better, to draw more people into those neighborhoods. Um, is, is, is a taxpayer, it just seems like a misallocation of funds, uh, to take something that's perfectly pleasant. Um, you know, to, to get some more revenue when we, we could get revenue from, uh, all these other dilapidated houses throughout Waterloo.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's really all. Thanks for your time.
You're muted, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, uh, any other comments from any, anyone? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, well, I, I'm opposed to this, uh, but I have some questions, uh, and first of all is, um, I'm just wondering, uh, why didn't we have an executive or closed session on this? Uh, cause usually during my time here, we have closed sessions on acquisition of property. Um, secondly, uh, does P and Z get involved with an issue like this before it comes to us for discussion? Or would they be involved if this was to pass? And if so, at, 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 in what regard? Uh, the third thing is that this property um, is a wooded area. A matter of fact, the people out there call it the woods. I met with, um, uh, eight of the property owners around there at the end of July and first part of August, uh, regarding their concern because they had heard that there were uh, some possibilities that the city was going to try to purpose, purchase this land, uh, from the parties that are owning it and then turn it into a cul-de-sac. Uh, every one of them that I met with said that the properties that they had purchased there, they had partly purchased because of the woods. And because what it meant to them being on a quieter street without a thoroughfare. Uh, some of them want to retire there, uh, some are retired there, uh, and want to stay living there in the environment that they had. Uh, in conjunction with that, the, um, eastern end of that, uh, one point three acres, the city already owns, uh, when the city purchased thirteen thirty two Walker Street, that property extended all the way back to where Mr. Stevens, uh, Gary Stevens, who I talked about earlier, where he resides at two oh two Fairfield. And he wanted, and his agreement was for a portion of that. Now, Mr. Evans, who was a developer for thirteen thirty two Walker, did not want all that land. So part of that land still is with the city. So my question is, has the city done soil testing on that remaining land behind thirteen thirty two Walker? And have they looked into what the land is inside that wooded area? Because the information I have received is that there was a lot of dumping going on into that area years and years ago, uh, in, in the mid, uh, twentieth century. Uh, so that needs to be checked out. I would hate to see the city buy into something and get into a development where we've got a situation where we've got hazardous, hazardous materials that had been dumped in land that we purchased, that is then going to make the land either unusable or we're going to have to clean that up at exorbitant prices. And then the final thing, Mr. Mayor, is that when I was out there, the neighbors were so, um, you know, animated about this, they wished to um, make their point known. And so they, uh, developed, uh, and I must admit, I helped them develop this, um, a petition that says the following, Mr. Mayor. We the undersigned our neighbors to the area, which we have referred to as Coach the Woods quotes, which is bounded by Walker, Cedar Bend, Fairfield, Normandy Streets in Northwest Waterloo. We, as this described neighborhood, are opposed to the destruction of the woods for the sake of a cul-de-sac development or anything similar. Many of us purchased our homes and continue to live here because of the woods. Losing the woods would mean a loss to our property's value, to our peace, to our serenity and to our quality of life. Now, um, this petition is signed by ninety one people, Mr. Mayor, and it includes people on those streets, Normandy, um, Fairfield, uh, Cedar Bend, uh, and I believe also Virginia Street. So there's people all around, there's even one on Longfellow Street that know the value of the woods. And, uh, so I have questions there, Mr. Mayor, but I also just, um, making these comments and opposition and ask the rest of the council to, uh, turn this resolution down.
Mr. Morrissey, how long have you had that petition? That you helped them write?
Since August.
Oh, my God.
You, you know, there were so many questions going back to the twentieth century that I don't even know if they're mundane to this conversation. You know, when we talk about a cul-de-sac, a cul-de-sac is not a through street. It's not a thoroughfare. So Jamie Noel, you know, I don't know about the twentieth century and all of that, but can you tell us something about this? And Mrs. Jewen, I think you already know, I have to get on to another call. Uh, so I have to take off now, but this is what happens when people hold on stuff and spring it on us.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I, I object to that because I did not, I informed Noel Anderson that the, that the neighbors out there were in a, opposed to any kind of development out there. I informed Noel Anderson of that when I was talking about Mr. Stevens and the development of his property. So it's not like nobody knew about this because they did.
Hey, um, I know I'm now the presiding officer, but I had some questions, um, to you, Mr. Anderson. My, my question is if we have so many people that are objecting to this, I find it hard to believe that we don't have other land within the city that the developer could use for the project he wants to, to implement. Why is this slice of the city so important to him when we should have other land that we own that he could use to develop? Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, you know, so we're talking about one specific developer. It, it could be a different developer. We have been working with one in particular. I mean, ideally, um, the first thing we look at is what lands does the city own? Um, according to the strategic plan, strategies, one point three, one point four, one point seven, three point one and three point eight. We're supposed to look at the creation of jobs, ways to create an environment to attract population to Waterloo, create a new tax base, new investment in the Kira area and Tiff areas. Um, so this is in the Kira area. Um, this is a proposed subdivision, um, that if we acquire this land, it would go with other six fifty seven A land, which we have recently been working on. Uh, the redevelopment of thirteen thirty two Walker Street. So that's why this came to the forefront is we had this back portion of land that is otherwise landlocked. Um, so we looked at, uh, again, meeting the strategies and the reuse of six fifty seven A land that we just acquired. Um, you know, I don't know that this portion of land is any more important than any other. At the same time, you know, we, we need residential development in, in the city of Waterloo. We don't get the proportion or the percentage of, of overall residential development equal to our other cities in Black Hawk County, um, percentage wise. So we're always looking for new opportunities for residential development. Um, you know, the, some of the reasons for concern about this being a dead end and a quiet street, again, a cul-de-sac would actually give a proper turnaround for garbage trucks, for snow plows, for fire trucks, and it would still be a dead end street, um, just more, you know, adequately designed for those turnarounds. Um, you know, in terms of environmental concerns of dumping out there, there is wording in the acquisition contract under number ten, which is standard wording. We do look at environmental reports for all the land that we acquire. So we'll do necessary testing and all that to ensure before we would close on the land if there were any concerns. Um, you know, I, I understand that neighbors, a lot of neighbors, everyone would like to live next to a park. Everyone would like to live next to a wooded area. Um, as staff, we are tasked with looking at infill development, trying to create and raise the tax base and create housing opportunities in Waterloo. You know, one of the things about this location is it is on the north side of Waterloo. This would be a new subdivision. Um, we have not had a new subdivision on the north side of Waterloo since two thousand and six. And that was really some infill lots along Bishop Avenue in the Maywood addition. Prior to that, it would have been nineteen ninety two before we had a new subdivision on the north side. So again, we're just, we're just exploring options out there as we're, as we're, uh, told to about the strategic plan for, for housing options in Waterloo. I think we're very fortunate to have someone that wants to build a new subdivision on the north side of Waterloo or in Waterloo in general. And we're just pursuing those, those options for the council to decide on.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any comments from counsel? Mr. Bowson?
Thank you, ma'am. A couple of questions for Noel. Uh, who, who's going to pay for the cul-de-sac?
The proposal and the development agreement would come to the council later. The proposal we've been discussing is that we would lay out the, the subdivision to make sure that, uh, that the, the abutting neighbor, Mr. Stevens gets his parcel and we lay out the lots for, for sale and development. And all of the infrastructure, so water, sewer and road extension out there would be done by the developer.
Okay. And then, and then, uh, are we giving these lots away then? Or, or will we be selling for fair market value if he's going to be putting in the infrastructure, including the, the cul-de-sac?
Generally, we would look at what is the value of the land and then what are the costs of the infrastructure? Similar likely would for, for a commercial development and lower the price. So if, if we think that the lots are, are worth forty thousand and it's going to cost him forty five thousand to extend the, the infrastructure and the road, then we would sell it for a dollar. With the development agreement saying that they're going to build five houses within a set time period. I know that the developer we've been talking to is ready to build the first house right away. We'd have to figure out when the, the additional four houses could be built.
Okay. Yeah, that, because that, because that was my concern is, is how much we're going to have invested in it because technically you're going to consider this infill development. So each, each lot is going to get five thousand dollars, correct?
That would be our normal policy, yes.
The clerk here, are they going to get equivalent to three years, a hundred percent tax abatement?
That'd be correct.
All right. That's all I have to.
If you figure like a normal, a normal house that, that would go through those programs, um, and, and again, it's going to depend a little bit on the value assigned to it and for the house that's there. Um, it's usually about a, it's usually about a five or a six year time period if you take that.
Other questions from counsel?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr., I'm going to go with Mrs. Klein.
No, I, I think Rome spoke first, actually. I can wait.
Okay, Mr. Amos.
Uh, yes, uh, for me, listening to this, what, what I'm hearing is, is there's a petition out there by the citizens saying that they do not want this development in that area. You know, we're, we're developing to generate tax dollars for the, the, the city. And for me, I have a real concern when citizens are telling us that they do not want this development there. They have their reasons and I understand those reasons. So for me, for this one, you know, and we've done this before, voted certain developments down. I'm, I'm going to vote no for this development simply because I know that this is what the citizens want. So I, I will not be supporting this particular agreement.
Thank you. Mrs. Klein.
I'm so torn about this, um, on a couple of levels. I live in a condominium. When I moved in, in twenty twenty, there was a wonderful wild space out front. There were no houses. We saw the families of foxes and deer and it was just the most gorgeous place to watch. And now I look at condos because a developer came along. We did not own the land in front of us. And when you don't own the land next to you or behind you or in front of you, you don't control the land. And there is another part of this that, that really makes me worry. We don't offer development, development. We don't get the opportunity for development on the northeast side. And now we have, we have a development opportunity falling in our lap. And they're going to get the same tax benefits and they're going to get the same as, the same five thousand dollars as the people that are, you know, doing it in Audubon. And the northeast side languishes, they languish for lack of development. And we've said all along, we wanted to increase that. And, and I, I do feel badly that a wild space will be lost. However, I do, I do know that that is the cry of, it was our cry when the condo was, uh, in front of us were going up, the loss. when the condo was in front of us were going up, the loss of that wild space. If if you live inside the city limits, that's going to happen sooner or later. So I I am torn. I'm I'm just waiting to hear more words come out of my council members so that I can decide where this is for me.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Greiner.
So I am going to join my colleagues in opposition to this development agreement. I understand the historic consequences of a lack of investment in portions of our town, and I do not in any way, shape, or form want to minimize those concerns, and I believe that that's something that we should look at as a city. Um however, there are a couple of things that have persuaded me um to oppose this particular development. Uh one, the neighborhood sounds fairly one-voiced on this particular issue. Um there does not seem to be um a dividing line between those who want it and those who don't. It seems fairly loud and fairly vocal, um and that it's many and it's multitudinous, um and they're uniform in what they want, which is for this not to happen. Um in addition, um I also believe that green spaces are important in cities. They are important uh in terms of quality of life, as the people who who spoke earlier talked about. Uh but they're also important in the overall vision as well as the spirit of what the city city is. Uh I know that there's a lot of land. I believe very firmly that our um Economic Development Department can find areas where we can can do more building because I know that we need to do that. But because of the uniformity of the voices of the neighborhood, as well as the need to also keep green spaces in our city so that we are not merely an urban jungle, but also keep those wild spaces in the places where we live and work and play, I will be opposing this particular resolution.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Voice.
Thank you. I I'm, I think like a lot of my colleagues right now, I'm unsure as to uh as to what to what to do. I I I'm a little disappointed that, you know, that if there was a petition um four months ago brought uh why we weren't made aware of it other than the night before, you know, we've we've heard, you know, if there were ninety people, why we weren't made aware of this. I know, I believe everyone received maybe one email today, and we've had two people speak out against it tonight. Um if there were these ninety people, you know, and I think the kind of the beauty of us now having um this expand, you know, the two-week time when timeframe between uh you know, council meetings and and what the preliminary agenda is going to look like, it should be, there should have been an overwhelming presence here tonight, I thought, if if there was truly that. As I'm looking at the area, I get it, you know, um you you want green space and you want all of that stuff. Uh I I as I'm looking at this, you're 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 essentially across the river from San Succi. You're you're near an elementary school. Um you know, you've got Hoyn Bryce Park right there. You've got, you know, there there's when we're talking about like taking away a lot of green space, yes, you're going to lose a lot of the trees in that particular area. But at the same time, you're going to be expanding and giving opportunities to um new homes, and you're going to increase the value of the homes surrounding it as well by by having these new homes there, and you're going to get rid of some of, you know, that you're going to get rid of something. You're going to add in a new garage. You're adding in that kind of space that like if we were looking at somewhere else where it was true, like there were just, that was it, was houses. I guess I would be more concerned, but I'm looking at this and I'm seeing, you know, in in that particular neighborhood, is it a lot of, are there a lot of parks or a lot of stuff? Are a lot of houses and stuff? Yes. There's also still a lot of green space around there for people to, you know, congregate and get together as well. Um and and I guess, you know, I think for right now, I'm 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 going to vote that we, you know, we 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 move forward and we allow uh this developer to do it because, and then we know about these things ahead of time, you know, and and we have more people come and speak to us and and do that. So I, you know, I think that's one of the things, and one of the reasons that I talked about was when we moved to having twice a month council meetings, people would know about these things, and we could have conversations behind the scenes. So we're not sitting here on the eve of a vote trying to figure that out, you know. I I think that was a big push for me is we would know why things are happening. And and I think, you know, if we're going to have development agreements like this, I would like them brought to us again before, and we have, we have an opportunity to hear a little bit before. So, thank you.
I agree, Mr. Voice. Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Boson.
And I would just make sure everyone had a chance to talk. I I would have really appreciated that that petition would have been some, would have been included in our council packet, especially since the council agenda came out a week ago yesterday, uh which get, which would have given us uh, you know, eight days to 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 digest this and and even talk to some people if we wanted to. So I I'm I'm disappointed if if I I don't know if 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 Mr. Morrissey had it or Noel had it or whoever had it, I just, I I truly wish it would have been included in our packet. That and uh so that uh and and I do wish that more people in that area, if ninety people sign that that petition, that more people would have you would have taken advantage of speaking at the council meeting tonight for or against it. Thank you, ma'am.
I agree. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I want to remind the council that uh there is a hundred percent of the neighborhood opposed to this. Now, if you want to make an issue about me having the petitions, the uh planning people knew that there was a hundred percent opposition to this, but yet they chose to go ahead with it. Uh so when I get presented with this and see it on the agenda, it is with full knowledge that planning knows that the neighborhood is totally opposed to this. Um I have, right in my pretty little hands right now, uh all of the pages with the signatures on it. Uh and whether anybody on council heard about this before tonight, it's still a fact that there's a hundred percent opposition to this uh resolution and the sale of this land uh to the city of Waterloo for future development because of the reasons they said. And I would ask this council to please, uh this is not like the private property owner developing like we have out in um uh the eight, the orange area where we're dealing with that private property owner and what they're doing. This private property owner wants to sell this land to the city to then develop it. Well, that's when we have a say in this, and the neighbors are saying we need to be respected for why we moved here, and everybody arounds it around us wants this to stay this way. So again, I ask of the council to deny this resolution for the sake of the neighbors who are a hundred percent opposed to this development.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Klein.
As my colleague was speaking, I was remembering in my first year when I was called out to uh the Neighborhood Association in Audubon because the neighbors were vehemently opposed to the development that was going to go in out there. And um I, we all have witnessed the people of Orange and their worries and concerns about that development. There just doesn't seem to ever be uh a neighborhood that is real happy about change in their neighborhood. There just isn't. And and usually, if you um go up and down the street, you're not going to find, you know, anyone that's located next to where that change is going to be that would be in favor of it. I ju- I'm just sitting here remembering all of those times that mimic this time.
Thank you. I would have one hopefully final question from Mr. Anderson. Do you believe that if this is turned down, will that developer find another location in the the northeast part of of Waterloo for their development?
Um I I, I mean, I don't I don't want you to to to, you know, just go by my decision. I I don't know. Um you know, this is a site that, working within the course, the developer we're working with was the one that was looking at sixteen forty four Logan um for a new house, and of course, we sold that to someone else to rehab that, uh which is which is a great project in itself. Um I I'm not certain that we have other land that that's ready to go on the north side that would meet the requirements of of what he was looking for in that he wanted to build a new house and then potentially build more houses. Uh but I'm not saying that we can't find one either. Um you know, this is just a, this was just a good opportunity that we're moving ahead with.
There was not another piece of land that he was also interested in.
At this time, there was not.
Okay.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Boson.
I'd like to postpone this until February first so that the council has a chance to digest this and possibly hear from more neighbors in that area.
Second.
I don't, could we add to that? I'd also like to see the petition, which we have, I agree, I'm upset that we haven't seen that yet.
I'd be more than happy to add that into my postponement.
To your motion. Is that okay with you, Mr. Greiner?
More than happy to second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to postpone this until, did you say February first?
Two weeks from today, two weeks from our next council meeting, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have a motion and a second discussion. Um I would, does it have to be roll call, Kelly?
Yeah, we do need to do roll call. I would add too that it'd be good to get the petition on file in my office so that that can be included in the council packet.
I would agree. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
Mr. Greiner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good week, guys. Bye-bye.